It's the same plot every time.
They all end the same.
Oh, we are alike.
They're hearing us talk about Hallmark, aren't they?
We need more than that. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is Monday, January 28, 2019. It's 5:30 PM and we are in the City Hall Council Chambers. Enroll call, Patty.
Cypher.
Present.
Hawkins.
Present.
Hesseck.
Here.
Lubinow.
Here.
Peters.
Here.
It's been determined that we have a quorum and we will now do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item is to approve tonight's agenda and there has been a request to pull 9.3. Libby said that her and Mike reviewed it a little bit deeper and they would just like to change some language in that before they bring it to the council as a whole. So with your permission, would someone please approve the agenda with pulling of 9.3?
So moved.
Motion offered by Peters and second by Hesseck. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Next item is 6.1, the reading of our last meeting, which was January 14, 2019. The minutes were presented in your packet. Is there please a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
Aye, so moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Lubinow and second by Hesseck. Is there any further discussion? All in...
I do have...
Okay.
Can he second if he wasn't here?
Second.
Okay, okay, thank you. Is there any further discussion?
I don't know, is that a rule?
Probably, actually.
All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. Next item is 8.1 and it is a proclamation for congenital heart defect awareness week. And I'd like to read the proclamation, please. Whereas the health and well-being of our children is of paramount importance and whereas each year in the United States, more than 40,000 babies are born with congenital heart defect. And whereas the medical community has identified congenital heart defects as the leading cause of birth defect-related deaths. And whereas medical research can provide more identifiable means of origins and symptoms of congenital heart defect. And whereas it is crucial that parents, pediatricians, and all those in the health profession have a greater awareness of the potential of congenital heart defects among newborns and children. And whereas congenital heart defect awareness week provides the opportunity for family and patients affected by these conditions to share their experiences and knowledge with the public so that all may be made more aware of how this defect affects all our lives. Now therefore I, Deborah J. Foster, do hereby proclaim February 17 through the 14th, 2019, as congenital heart defect awareness week and encourage all to join me in this special observance. And we once again are very blessed to have Haley Greeley with us. And Haley is an expert on congenital heart defect. Haley, would you like to come and say a couple words at the podium? And Mom, Rachel? Thanks for being here, Haley.
Hi, my name is Haley and I was born with multiple heart and lung defects. I have had two open-heart surgeries and numerous procedures. There are no cures for heart defects. I will have to see a doctor yearly for the rest of my life. Every one in 100 babies are born with a heart defect, making it the number-one birth defect. That means every day in Minnesota, two babies are born with a heart defect. Thank you for helping me raise awareness about heart defects.
Thank you for being here, Haley, and all the years that you have been here. And it's been fun to watch you grow. And so you please keep coming back, will you please? And you want to come up here and get the proclamation and shake everybody's hand so we... because we have you another year. Thank you, Rachel. Okay, 9.1, public hearing for softened water services rates increase. And at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing and we will go to Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In order to maintain a sound financial position with our water fund, the Public Utilities Commission recommended a 3% water increase to be included in the 2019 budget. That rate increase was included with the budget that was presented to the council on December 10 at our budget hearing and the budget was approved by council at that time. So in order to make that rate effective and because it's set by ordinance, we have to hold a public hearing. So that's what we're doing tonight. This in effect would rate... increase our rate of water rates 3% effective with the February bill that would go out February 10. And the effect of the 3% rate increase for our average residential customer is about $1.34 a month. There's some sample bills for some larger customers included in the packet too. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Are we consistent with other towns as far as what our water rates are?
We don't... we don't set our water rates according to what other municipalities do. I mean, it's basically set based on our individual operations. They're all going to be different. We do look at what other utilities are charging, you know, when we're looking at rate increases, but it doesn't really have an impact on our actual water rates.
Well, partially because I think we've learned this in the past that our rates in Fairmont likely could be higher than other towns our size because we have a fairly new facility, right? That's part of the deal we're paying.
Correct, right.
You know, and so it's hard to make a direct comparison depending on... I've heard Mike say that anyway, so...
Chemical costs have gone up quite a bit too, I believe, haven't they?
Yes, chemical costs, right now, you know, we've had a lot of breaks, main breaks. That's been driving some costs increases for the water fund too. And we have, you know, a few larger capital projects on the horizon. Lime Pond decommissioning is one and we've got a couple of ground storage tanks that we need to be replacing. So we do have some larger capital projects coming up here in the next five years, so...
I see they're digging again on Highway 15. Are we looking at a long-range plan for that stretch of street?
Yes. No, we're looking... we have... obviously have some problems going on in that stretch in front of Bank Midwest and Arby's along Highway 15. There isn't adjacent line that's on the other side of the street that we're going to look at putting plans together to run a service... run the services from the east side across to the west side and abandon that old main that's causing us a lot of issues.
It looks like in the same area. Are they different breaks so they're...
Very close to each other, yep.
Ground movement or is the pipe...
When they're... generally what they found when they're digging them up, they're finding rocks that were backfilled in the trench during it. And then the rocks are shifting as the ground temperatures change and the rock actually punctures the pipe when it shifts.
Thank you, Troy. And there is no one in attendance at this public hearing. And so is there a motion, please, to close the public hearing at this time?
So moved.
Second. Motion offered by Hawkins and second by Cypher. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. The next one would be please to approve ordinance number 2019-01 and ordinance amending ordinance 2018-01 of the City of Fairmont relating to softened water services rates.
So moved.
Motion offered by Peters.
Second.
And second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? It's a roll call vote, please, Patty. Cypher.
Yes.
Hesseck.
Yes.
Hawkins.
Yes.
Lubinow.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
The motion passed. 9.2, a public hearing for ordinance number 2019-02 amending 26-154, R3, Multiple Family Residential District. And I had Megan, and so who would like to take this one for Megan?
I guess I will.
Thank you, Libby. Well, first of all, let me open the public hearing.
Public hearing.
Thank you. It's open.
Oh, hi. So, as we're periodically reviewing the code as a whole and Megan is going through the zoning code and trying to, you know, make sure everything is working as well as it should, they discovered that with this multiple-family residential district lot area restriction, the yard requirement says that the side yards shall be at least 10% at the minimum, but there was no maximum. And so that could lead to some absurd results. And so the suggestion is not less than 10 feet and not more than 30 feet is going to be required for a side yard to provide more building space within this district.
Okay. Any questions for Libby at this time by the council? And again, there is no one in attendance, no in attendance to this meeting. So is there please a motion to close this public hearing?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hawkins.
Second.
And second by Lubinow. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of this motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. And the next one would be, is there please a motion to approve ordinance number 2019-02 as presented?
Aye, so moved.
Motion offered by Lubinow and second by Hawkins. And is there any further discussion? And this is a roll call vote, please, Patty. Hesseck.
Yes.
Hawkins.
Yes.
Lubinow.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Cypher.
Yes.
The motion passed. 11.1, December 31, 2018, investment report and Paul.
Yes, included in the packet is the semi-annual interest report as of December 31 or investment schedule. We earned $474,000 in interest in 2018. That's actually up $136,000 from 2017. So we are getting to see a little bit better rates finally. So before broker statements are available, if the council ever wants to view those, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on the investment report.
Any questions for Paul at this time? Thank you, Paul. 13.1, formal revocation of on-sale liquor license, Sunday liquor license for Jenny's Smokehouse and Elizabeth.
Thank you. And I believe it's Jesse's Smokehouse.
Excuse me, Jesse's, excuse me.
We don't want Jenny to be worried that we're taking her liquor license.
Jesse's, thank you for correcting me.
And I'm sorry, I have now forgotten the name of the gentleman that owns this place. Carl Wilcox. Mr. Wilcox has apparently having some cash flow issues and he did let his liquor liability insurance lapse last year at the end of the year and he failed to pay the second half of his annual liquor license fee. And so at this time, we are asking the council to formally revoke his liquor license. I would like to assure the council that when the insurance company sent a letter to the city as they're required when the insurance lapsed, we did make contact with Mr. Wilcox and informed him that he would not be allowed to sell liquor anymore without the insurance. And he has been, as far as I'm aware, he has been complying with that.
Okay, thank you, Libby. Is there please a motion to revoke the on-sale liquor license, Sunday liquor license for Jesse's Smokehouse LLC for failure to maintain liquor liability insurance and for failure of payment of the second half of the license fee?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hawkins.
Second.
And second by Lubinow. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. 15.1, professional service agreement with Lake Avenue Reconstruction and Troy.
Evening, Mayor and Council. As part of the 2019 improvement program, looking at having Lake Avenue reconstructed from Forest Street east to downtown Plaza, this is a pretty involved project with the existing intersections, as you know, at Main Street. There's quite a few business accesses on there. To get the process started of designing this project and having some public meetings to start looking at the design and construction of this project, we need to get started with that as soon as possible, actually looking for at 2020 construction for this project just due to the design and planning schedule that will be required to get this done. It is a state aid project, but staff is recommending that we hire Bolton and Mink to complete the professional engineering services for this project for the Lake Avenue reconstruction. Be happy to answer any questions.
Is there motion please to approve hiring Bolton and Mink for the professional engineering services for the Lake Avenue Reconstruction Project?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hawkins and second by Hesseck. Is there any further discussion?
What, Troy, is our plans for the rest of Lake Avenue from County Road 39 into town? When is that?
Right... well, we'll talk about it at our work session on February 11. I have a listing that shows that stretch of street as just kind of how it falls in with our other projects. We did look at trying to fit that into this year or the 2019 improvement program, but just with the amount of funding on other projects, that one's... was pushed off to a future year. Right now, that would be 2021 as a... as a year that it would be included in an improvement program for any significant repairs. We do have a plan to go out with our crews and do some patching on those areas where that frost boils up every spring to the west this summer to address that.
Yeah, I mean, I get a lot of complaints about that first two-tenths of mile into town. Be nice if there was a drivable area on that.
With... I know one of the things we talked about is in the 2021 plan, does that include full reconstruction or just maybe doing the overlay? It'd probably be a combination just with that rural section to the west end. There is no curb and gutter and appears there's no drain tile under that as well. So we would have to do a little bit more work on that section and then probably do an overlay through the curb and gutter section as you get a little further east past the businesses.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, is there please a motion to approve? I mean, all up... all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Sorry, all not in favor? Motion carried.
How you doing, Mayor?
God, I just lost it there. I'm sorry. 15.2, board and commission appointment, and this will be me. And I am seeking approval to appoint Chantel Kayler-Royer to the Fairmont Economic Development Authority Board. She will be fulfilling Wendy Boss's term, which expires on June 30 of 2019. And a huge thank you to Chantel for accepting this offer if it's approved by the council. And so is there please a motion to approve the appointment of Chantel Kayler-Royer to their Fairmont Economic Development Authority Board?
So moved.
Second.
Motion offered by Peters and second by Hesseck. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. 15.3, advertise for bids for the 2018 deconstruction project and Troy.
The plans and specs are ready for the 2018 D project, which is the replacement of the Pioneer Bridge, proposing to put in a 12-foot wide pedestrian structure similar to the one that's located in Cedar Creek Park at the... excuse me, at the creek crossing there. Everything's ready to go. We're looking to get approval to advertise for that project with a bid opening on February 20 so we can get it constructed this summer.
Is there motion please to approve resolution 2019-03 approving advertising for the 2018/ deconstruction project?
So moved.
Motion offered by Hesseck.
Second.
And second by Peters. Is there any further discussion? Roll call vote, please, Patty. Hawkins.
Yes.
Lubinow.
Yes.
Peters.
Yes.
Cypher.
Yes.
Hesseck.
Yes.
Motion passed. 15.4, vacation a portion of easement located at 116 Water Street. And this is you again, Troy.
Yes, we received a request to vacate an easement that existed at 116 Water Street. Jeremy Evans, been working with him, he submitted a letter to the city asking to vacate an easement that is currently on the west side of his property with the agreement that he would allow the easement to move it to the east side. By shifting the easement over, it allows him the opportunity to expand onto his garage if he were to choose to do that or any future owner would be able to do that. So going through the process here to have the public hearing to vacate that portion and then we would be simultaneously working on an agreement to create the new easement on the other side of the lot to maintain access for the city's existing easement on that parcel.
Is there motion please to set a public hearing for February 11, 2019 at 5:30 PM and direct the city clerk to mail and publish notice of the hearing?
Aye, so moved.
Motion offered by Cypher.
Second.
And second by Lubinow. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. 16.1, accounts payable and Paul.
We're just asking for approval to pay the bills for January and I'd be happy to answer any questions anybody may have on those.
Is there motion please to approve the payment of the January 2019 bill as presented?
So moved.
Motion offered by Peters.
Second.
Second by Lubinow. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried. And now we'll move on to 17. Anyone have anything that they'd like to bring to the council's attention under 17?
I do...
Sure.
I'm gonna... I meant to pass this out earlier, so if you just want to take one, pass one down. These are fresh off the press. I am Commissioner for Region 9, representing the City of Fairmont and the City Council. I also sit on the Economic Development Committee and the Legislative Committee. And these are the priorities that our committee on behalf of Region 9 have set as priorities for legislative priorities. They include childcare, noting that 27% of needed childcare spaces aren't able to be filled in southern Minnesota. Transportation, 115% increase in state highway miles that will be in poor condition by 2026, mostly in rural Minnesota. Local government aid to get back up to the levels of 2003. Regional crisis centers in support of housing, kind of speaks for itself. Broadband expansion, 22% of rural households in Minnesota were without download broad... without good download broadband access. And then substance abuse prevention, opioids and meth. 688% increase in hospitalizations due to opioid use since 2008. And 596% increase in hospitalizations due to meth use since 2008. So just wanted for you to be aware of those priorities and that's something that we'll be talking to our legislators about. And if you need to use this when talking to your legislators, please feel free.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything?
Okay. I don't have this prepared, but I would like to give a huge thank you to the Pond Hockey Association and for the Fairmont Youth Hockey Association that put on the Southern Minnesota Pond Hockey Championship, I believe just last weekend. Colder than blazes, snowed to beat the band, they worked their tails off. Thank you. And I'm pretty comfortable that I think the same people have been doing this now for eight years or thereabouts over many years. I know they could use volunteers, folks, so step up.
Nicely done, thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Counselor Lubinow?
I went to the newly elected city officials.
Oh, good.
In Mankato on Friday and Saturday. Got to meet a lot of people from the League of Minnesota Cities and also other individuals that had just joined city councils or mayor, city administrator. And surprisingly, pretty much everybody is struggling with road repairs, trying to get those taken care of, so we're not alone on that bit. I'd just like to also ask everybody to remember about the snow emergencies. I did have a vehicle in my neighborhood that was parked past the snow emergency, so please help the city plow drivers out and the police officers so they don't have to come ask you about that, so...
Thank you very much. Anybody else? Hearing none, is there please a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion offered by Cypher.
Second.
And second by Hawkins. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carried, and the meeting is adjourned. All opposed, motion carried, and the meeting is adjourned.